Public notice hereby given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all persons for the city of Bastard Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty. At six P M in the courtroom at City Hall. This is our call to order. We're going to ask everyone to stand. We're going to have a moment of silence for those who are hurting or grieving. And I'm going to ask Councilman Shaw to lead us in prayer and Mayor Pro Tem Larry Prater to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity to come together tonight, Lord, and work on the issues that are bothering us concerned here in our city of Bastard. And we just pray that, Lord, you would bless our time here together as we work on these different projects. And, Lord, we just thank thee for each one here. We thank thee for the attendants here tonight and to help especially our business. And, Lord, just again, thank you for when God loves us and takes care of us, yes, as you also, Lord, just continue to live with our country as we work through the issues everywhere. We pray that you would intervene in there and to make things right, Lord. And we give you honor and praise, Lord, in Christ's name, amen.
Salute the friends and leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our world. Hold coffee, please.
Ms. Moore, here. Mr. Green.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Prater, here.
Mr. Lot, here.
We have the floor all facing.
This meeting is now in session. Do you have a call? Announcements? Public events?
Yeah, I do. I'm going to say thank you to the constituents of the city of Bastard for the renewal of our taxes that we have. And I really appreciate it, and I know everybody in the council appreciates it. All, all that we've done to give you top priority.
Mr. Prater, you have an announcement. Just Mr. Lot. Ms. Moore. I have a couple. Of course, yesterday, I got a call from Fingmuck and also from our homeless security director, James Bonnison, Chief Deputy at the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Office, and who anticipated an announcement. We got the announcement from Morehouse Parish and Union Parish was added to the FEMA list where we get individual assistance. So persons who had their homes or businesses damaged through the storm can now apply for FEMA. Of course, you know, there are insurance restrictions. If you had insurance, you have a restriction, but if you had any structure that was uninsured, particularly there's health and there's insurance and all types of health. The disaster SNAP program has not been approved yet. That's where people can replace their groceries that they lost as a result of power outages. And also, we have an announcement that the grant that we wrote two years ago, we have the approval to proceed. Is that correct, Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir.
We applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant for tonight to do walk-in trails in our parks. And we started at Smith Wilson Park. That's the park that's dedicated to Cooper Callenoff, Wilson and John Smith. And we renamed that park the first, at the first meeting that this mayor and council in this term. And I appreciate the corporates for the council in naming, renaming East Madison Park to see the force of parking on of Chuff and Down. And we immediately went to work because we want the National Park Service, we applied for a grant for National Park Service, and we're giving a technical grant where we have a National Park representative out of Monmouth Cave. We stationed at Monmouth Cave in Kentucky, but he's our designated consultant. And we've had the park DPS just by Messenger and Associates, and we're going to engage our engineering firm on design. We have to do that first, and we just got this note based on two days ago, I guess, Mr. Cogan. And we got the notice to proceed. So we'll see construction of a, we got a ten-foot-wide right trail that traverses from the corner by Chuck Creek where you enter into Elton Street, going through behind the swimming pool and exiting the park on East Picante. I'm sorry. East Hickory, East Hickory Street. Our goal is to tie all four parks together with the, I'm asking this council to empower the mayor to engage the state of Louisiana to swap Elton Street with Elton Street and Na, I'm sorry, Elton Street and Van Avenue to, all the way to Pleasant Drive for our ownership of Nav Street. Nav is head of industrial, and we are fortunate, so we're asking the state to honor their complete streets program, so the sidewalks invite access on Elton Street with Mary Van Avenue.
Do you have this bid yet?
White Street. What are you going to work?
Come up to the railroad, come up to Elton, to ask about when people look and complain and tell them everything.
Well, Mr. Prater, we have our, we have to have, we have to send our asphalt, our Kenworth asphalt truck.
That's what I said, don't mistake. Elton Street.
Elton, you're talking about on Elton Street?
Elton was, white on the other.
Yeah, Elton still, no, we did the swap, went down. But they, the state agreed, we got the state to agree to do a forty-year resurfacing. They're going to totally redo Elton Street and totally redo from the traffic light on Harrington, from traffic light address to that, that Chuff and Center, down Harrington to Lars Lane. And then right on Lars Lane, one block, and left on Van Avenue, go across Miracle, all the way around the curve to Pleasant Drive. That's, that goes to, are now, they're state highways. And we did the swap for our portion of Nav Avenue, which is a southern bypass of the town.
When they install on Elton, right there?
They're in the design, the design space, Mr. Prater. And we're going to redo all, and we want to, I want the council to know that we're applying for under complete streets, their policy, that they honor the policy and reject walk-in trails. So what we asking you, as I appear home here, to ask to extend the agenda to allow us to apply full capital grants, but that's going to be good after October seventeenth.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Jan, I'm.
No, this is announcement time. You want to come to the microphone?
No, sir, we just can't hear.
Oh, you can't?
And I respect the fact that we have to wear the mask and there, and I have a medical condition, so I don't have mine.
I'm sorry.
But I respect the fact, but we can't hear out here.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay. Thank you. The question was, the comment was that they couldn't hear. It's difficult to talk with a mask on, and it's, it's a little difficult to breathe when you're going all the time. You have an announcement, or you want to say something?
Question. You say some about what your contract?
No, that's a good question about the announcement. And I agreed with the state of Louisiana to swap streets, because they have Elton Street from Holliston Road to one sixty-five, okay? There's a state highway. And so is Harrington from the traffic light, from the traffic light on North Washington to Lars Lane, one block before Miracle, and right along Lars Lane, one block, and left on Van Avenue, all the way out. I don't have time to go through it all today, but the state, we're ready to negotiate with the state. They're going to pay those before they turn them over to us.
So maybe you just call it out, just those three or four streets that's going to be gone?
Under the state contract, that's the swap. Thank you. But we'll go through that later. If you contact me again, and I'll give you, I'll give you the details on that.
Well, it's better that it come out and be written, documented.
It is, it's documented. I can give you the, yeah. So in addition to, in addition to the good news about the FEMA designation, where we are categorically with I A, that's individual, individual assistance. But we have posted that, and it's in the Bastard Valley Enterprise, and it's posted, I know the small posted something today on it also, right?
I do.
Yes, and we made a post on it, so you can get that off our Facebook page. It's going to be on our website. So those are good things that's happening. Public comments, if they relate to any item on their agenda, is their person. And I'm going to ask for one change from Ms. Moore. I'm going to ask that we let Judge Shannon Brimian, the candidate for the Supreme Court as the fore, come, so we won't talk him up late in the chamber.
Go bring the back of the announcement.
Ma'am?
The one.
This one? Okay. All right. Let me read this. This is, we have Mr. Bowles here, our bond attorney. And public notice, notice of intent, called an election, notice hereby given at the courts with section nineteen dot one of Title Forty-two of the Louisiana Replant Statutes of nineteen fifty, as amended, that the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastard, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority, the governing authority in parentheses, of the city of Bastard, state of Louisiana, the city in parentheses, at its regularly scheduled meeting of October eighth, twenty twenty, at its regularly meeting place, City Hall, two oh two, East Jefferson Street, Bastard, Louisiana, at six P M, will discuss and consider adopting a resolution, ordering and calling an election to authorize a ten-year, three-mil property tax, which will be used for the purpose of providing additional support to the city of Bastard Fire Department, and upon approval by the qualified voters there for the anticipated avails of such tax to be rendered into bonds for such purpose by the city of Bastard, state of Louisiana, for announcement and publication in the official journal, which is the Bastard Enterprise. Note, this announcement, of course, had, Ms. Bowles already went through this, had to be read, entered the minutes of the meeting at least twenty, but not more than sixty days. Prior to the date the resolution can be passed, it must be also be published in the official journal at least twenty, but not more than sixty days prior to the date of the resolution can be passed. So that, that is a reading. Mr. Bowles is here. Does any of the council have any questions about this? Mr. Prater? Mr. Lot?
He's here.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, this is the same issue that we can deal with. As, as you know, the city of Bastard, there were thirty-two firemen filed suit against the city of Bastard for being paid improperly. They were in fact being paid improperly and not completely. And in two thousand eight, those thirty-two firemen filed suit against the city of Bastard for back wages and with the petition to adjust their pay accurately. The city, they prevailed, and it was proven beyond any reason that the city, along with other cities, now, it's not just the city of Bastard, but there were many cities in Louisiana not paying firemen a court to the formulas set out by law. So Bastard was, had plenty of company in debt because it was a pretty difficult formulation. Nonetheless, that suit probably could have been settled for a couple of hundred thousand dollars in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. And the suit set unboxed here, and no action was taken to settle it or to bring it to a resolution. And in two thousand seventeen, April of two thousand seventeen, the courts, the judge that was presiding in this case demanded, commanded the city to come up with their own forensics, and the fire, the fire department accountant and lawyers came up with their spreadsheet with all the formulation. We expected those, didn't we, Ms. Cogan?
Yes, sir.
And we found them to be pretty, to be accurate. We can find any deficiencies in it, so the city adopted their, their finding. And the, the city kind of corrected their formulation every time we found a, an error or some, something that wasn't right, we corrected it, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to add on and keep this court going. Nonetheless, the amount grew to one point six seven million dollars by the time Mr. Pierre took arm to, to try to resolve this, because the court pulls us in. Mr. Pierre, do you want to address that or we correct it for him?
He's doing great job.
So we got called in the court, and the long and short of it is, is that we owe the firemen one point six seven million dollars, those thirty-two firemen. Some are deceased, some are nursing homes, some are retired, some are still with us on our drug court. We need to resolve it. Now, where's the bad part? It gets worse. We owe judicial interest, the state, we got Supreme Court, the bill, the court judge here, we got a lawyer here, may have some other legal minds. But there's a thing called judicial interest. You know, the, you don't shop for interest rates here. The court set judicial interest on judgments and say, okay, you hadn't paid it, so this year the judicial interest is going to be, last year it was six percent on one point, well, it's more than one point six seven. But it's every year that, that interest compounded. So we owe somewhere north of one point four million dollars in judicial interest. It was six percent last year. Because this council didn't take action to take this before the votes for approval, we now owe a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars more today than we did when we tried to get this resolved. The judicial interest is something like four hundred and sixty dollars a day that we're getting further in the hole. Okay. Now, this year, the judicial interest is five point six percent. So we are getting further and further in the hole, and we can't afford to even pay the, the interest on that a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars last year. This, we, we do not have the money to even address the interest. So Mr. Pierre is negotiating, has been negotiating with the, with the alternatives for the firemen. And I believe that we can settle this if we get this three-mil tax, because the both sides are going to compromise, and this, settle this and get it off our books. We have our auditor here, Miss Cindy, are you, you hear Miss Cindy? Miss Cindy, are you there? I thought you were right there. Okay, I thought you came in. But that's on our audit every year, and a three million dollar plus debt surely hurts your ratings, I believe, Mr. Bowles, is that true, sir? And we wonder why we can't borrow the money that we once could, and we got, we got to bail this debt. We got to do this, and this is the easiest way to do it now. We've been meeting with District Number Two, but we can't, we can't sell this any other way. This is the only way, and we should let the voters decide. This council should not be the, the roadblock to taking this to the voters, let the voters decide if the city wants to be responsible, live up to its responsibilities to get this settled. We can get it settled. What is three mils? Three mils, a mil of course is a thousand of a dollar. A penny is a hundred of a dollar, and a mil is a tenth of a penny. Only one hundred thousand dollar house at Morehouse Parish. That probably, for taxpayers, is very, a tenth of cents of ten thousand dollars, and one mil is ten dollars. So a hundred thousand dollar house would, would cost ten dollars per mil. So that's thirty bucks. Now, here's the thing, we had a meeting, and I'll be quick with this, Judge, so we can, we can get you on. We had a meeting where this council, where we entertained this, and it ended two-two. One councilman was not here, and the vote was two-two. Mr. Moore was best before, before we appointed Ms. Moore to take, take Mr. Moore's place, I made the announcement, I said, look, I promised when I ran, the fire department and it was deadlocked. was a, a Class Two in two thousand five. Every five years, we raid the fire department. And the law says, the law states that as the fire rating change, the insurance rate must be changed. Every, every insurance agent that sells policies in Louisiana has to join this association. I've got the papers in, in my office, and I was going to read the, read the law to you, but I'm glad, I know you guys glad that I left them over and accomplished. But, but the, when the rating changes, the insurance rate, the fire insurance rate has to be changed also. So I planned laws, and I promised, in an effort, as a campaign promise when, when we ran, that we would do our best to get the fire rating back at least to a two. The fire rating fell was a two, in two thousand five was a two. And in two thousand ten, it fell to a three. In two thousand fifteen, it fell to a four, which increased everyone's insurance rates by approximately twenty percent. That was the figure that I, on research that I found. So I figured that if we could get the fire rating from a four back to a two at a minimum, we would save everyone twenty percent on their insurance at a minimum. Well, those gentlemen, do we have any firemen here? Okay, we've got two firemen right there. They took charge, and we did some things like, and the council approved, I dedicate two, two acres of land for fire training and do some positioning. And we were able not to go from a four to a two, but a four to a one, which saves approximately, probably close to thirty percent on everyone's. So I, I made the statement when we had this hearing, that we're going to take the fire department and save you more than we're trying to get to settle this suit. And one gentleman said, one doesn't have to do with the other, and I said, it's two sides of the same coin. You know, you flip a coin, you got heads, toss, tails, savings. We're saving ninety-nine percent with the taxpayers, much more than this three mils. So either we're for the firemen or we're against them, there's no middle ground. We're either for, living up to our responsibility, or we're against them. And right after that, when that was voted down, then, then there were groups that came from out of nowhere, basically, and start doing things for the firemen. Well, gee, the firemen need to be paid. If we want to show our appreciation, let's pay them. Let's get this done. Now, I want this on the election for, when we are up for reelection, those of us that might want, because it should be the, the citizens need to know that that's their choice, and if they disagree, they can vote us out if we agree with it, or vote us out if we disagree, depending on where the citizens stand. We shouldn't try to hide this election in some obscure, where we have ten percent, Robert T. Nethinck people. We had a nine point some percent turnout. And the city of Bastard needs to, needs to, best, needs to get there and let the citizens decide. So I'm asking these councilmen, all five of you, not to block this, let the citizens decide. And I want it on the day, I'm asking Mr. Bowles to put it on the day that we go up for reelection, so the people can do a referendum on us and the tax. Let's not try to hide this, and let's not be coward. Any questions? Yeah, that was an announcement, Mr. Prater.
So this, no. All you asking us to do, to approve, that being the.
That's all. I'm not asking you to attack people. That's all. That's all I asked last time, Mr. Lot. It was clear.
So.
It was two-two.
That was the answer.
Next time, we're going to move on to next time.
This time.
Not this time.
This time.
You let the folks of the fire department, people who are going to pay the fire people, come and tell like they did the last time. But they're talking from a fuller pocketbook, because this fire department's one of nine in the state that's a one, and we're the smallest town, and I'm going to be like a certain person that I watch, that's never been done going from a four to a one, it's never been done in history of Louisiana. That's my impersonation of it. High, low, efficient. It's never been done. Okay? And this fire department's a great, so, and we're the smallest city with a low rating in the state of Louisiana, and we need to pay them. Okay. Approval of the minutes of, oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Does anyone have a comment? Real quick. That was announcement, Ms. Cogan made to read this, to read. Okay. Any comments about anything on this agenda? Okay. There are no comments. Approval of the last minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth, been moved by Councilman Lot, seconded by Councilwoman Moore. Any discussion? All in favor? Did I ask that the minutes are approved? Item six, Finance Committee report, resolution nineteen dash nineteen fifteen, bill of complaint for the month of August. Finance Committee Chair Shaw.
Sir. Mayor, the Finance Committee has reviewed the bill of complaint for the month of August, and I make a motion that we adopt them tonight.
Okay, the resolution is being recommended for adoption by the, by the committee, Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Shaw.
Second.
Second, uh, Mayor Jim Prater. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution carried. Okay, item seven, just a report, Reverend Spencer's report for July twenty, requires my action, correct, Ms. Cogan?
I disagree.
Okay, item eight, ordinance twenty dash forty-two fifty-eight, the board is authorized to borrow by the city of Bastard. Oh, I'm sorry. We got Mr. Brimian. Let's go down to item, item, where is it? Ten. We're going to spot ten. Mr. Brimian, please. Where? Yes, sir. If you go to the right. And I want it on the day, I'm asking Mr. Bowles to put it on the day that we go up for reelection. So the people can do a referendum on us and the tax. Let's not try to hide this, and let's not be coward. Any questions? Yeah, that was an announcement, Mr. Green.
So this, go ahead.
All you asked in, thus did you approve, but that being the.
That's all. I'm not asking either of the tax people. That's all. That's all I asked last time, Mr. Howard. It was clear. It was two-two. Next time, we're going to move on to next time. Not this time. You let the foes of the fire department, people who are going to pay the fire people, come and tell, like they did the last time. But they're talking from a full pocketbook because this fire department's one of nine in the state that's a one. And we're the smallest town, and I'm going to be like a certain person that I watch that's never been done going from a four to a one. It's never been done in this Louisiana. That's my impersonation of it. High, low, efficient. It's never been done. Okay, and this fire department's a great, so, and we're the smallest city with a low rating in the state of Louisiana, and we need to pay them. Okay, um, um, approval of the minutes of, um, oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Does anyone have to have a comment? Real quick. That was announcement, Mr. Goldman made to read this, to read. Okay, any comments about anything on the agenda? Okay, um, there are no comments. Approval of the last minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth. So been moved by Councilman, um, Locke. Seconded by Councilwoman Moore. Any discussion, all in favor? Yes, the, uh, the minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, uh, Resolution nineteen, dash nineteen fifteen, bill of complaint for the month of August. Uh, Finance Committee Chair Shaw. Sir.
Mayor, the Finance Committee has reviewed the bill of complaint for the month of August. I make a motion that we adopt them tonight.
Okay, the resolution is being recommended for adoption by com, by the committee, uh, Finance Committee Chair, Michelle. Seconded by, uh, Mayor Jim Cramer. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution carried. Okay, item seven, just a report, Revenue Department's report for July twenty, requires my action, correct? Ms. Goldman? Okay, item eight, Ordinance twenty dash forty-two fifty-eight, the board is authorized to borrow by the city of Bastrop. Oh, I'm sorry, we got Mr. Grumman. Let's go down to item, item, um, where is it? Ten. We're going to spot ten. Mr. Grumman, please, where? Yes, sir. If you hold to the microphone and Mr., um, well, welcome you here. You visited Bastrop a long time ago when you first announced that you came to, uh, this city hall and, and shook hands and everything. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and I hope that you could, could.
Yes, sir.
Can I take this off?
Yeah, and we're going to ask you to step back two steps with the microphone, and you can, you can keep it up. You know, get the microphone, you take the microphone with you.
I, I got you.
Yes, sir. Okay, there.
With this, this, according to rules everywhere I go, I was a little bit different. I, I want to keep you, I know you've got a full agenda, and, um, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Shannon Grumman. I am currently a judge on the Third Circuit Court of Field by my federal Louisiana Supreme Court. Uh, I was born and raised in the birthplace of rock and roll, Farady, Louisiana. Uh, and when I left Farady, I went to school in Monroe, U L M. Uh, graduated first in my class at U L M. When I left there, I went to, uh, law school in Baton Rouge. Uh, by the time I finished Baton Rouge, I had a law degree and picked up a wife as well, uh, while I was in Baton Rouge. Uh, I've got a couple of kids. Um, I've got a twenty-year-old who's a, uh, senior, just started his first day as a senior in Louisiana Tech today. And I've got a sixteen-year-old daughter who's in, in high school in El Salvador. But, uh, in any event, I spent about thirteen years as a practicing lawyer. Uh, I worked very hard to defend, uh, businesses and families and professionals, uh, all over the state of Louisiana. And then in two thousand and eight, actually, my father retired, uh, as a judge on the Court of Field, and I ran for the place, and I have been, uh, in that position, uh, ever since. And why do I tell you that? Why is it important for you to know that I'm a Supreme Court Judge, well, because the work of a Supreme Court Justice is to review the work of other judges. And that is what I've been doing as a Supreme Court Judge, well, actually. The other thing that's the work of a Supreme Court Justice is to write legal opinions. And that's what I've been doing for the past twelve years. So when I tell you that I have the experience, I mean, does he just that I have the right experience? Do I have, uh, the experience necessary to move up to this next level as a Supreme Court Justice? And, uh, in any event, that's really all I wanted to say. I know you got to get, you've got an overwhelming agenda to cover, but I want to thank you very, very much for giving me the platform. I want to thank you very, very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. And most importantly, I want to thank you very, very much for giving me the opportunity to ask you for your vote. It's very, it's crucial, it's important, I don't want to leave here without expressly saying, "Please vote for, uh, the number three." And I greatly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for making the drive and, and coming all the way north to Bastrop. It's about as far north as you can get.
That's right.
Without being in, in, out of state Louisiana. So thank you so much for your second visit to Bastrop. Here, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Council. Um, item eight, Ordinance twenty dash forty-two fifty-eight, and ordinance authorizing the borrowing by the city of Bastrop, uh, state of Louisiana, the city, of not exceeding seven hundred thousand dollars by the issuance of its revenue anticipation note. Uh, that's an R E N. Um, series twenty-twenty, providing for the payment thereof, provided with respect to the rate of interest there, um, provided for a pledge and dedication of taxes and other revenues of said city for security and payment thereof in principal and interest and other matters connected therewith. Mr. Bowles, uh, Mr. Steve, Steve was supposed to come, uh, Bill to you. Mr. Bowles, did you go to the microphone?
Yes, Your Honor, today evening, yeah, uh, this is a, a, and short-term borrowing that we do in anticipation of collecting the property taxes at the end of the year. Uh, this year, uh, we got Red River Bank has agreed to purchase the note for three and a half percent. And, um, and because it's such a short period of time, it's going, it's paid not so quick, that, uh, there's very little interest at all at that time. And so it's just a cash management tool. We did that of all of the ones that we, that, uh, the State Loan Commission's been analyzing, being a lot more closely. And, uh, we got no questions on, on this year. They committed us to continue to try to build down the amount, and we, we brought it down from a million and a half to, I guess, even more, I think, one time. And all this really exacerbated by the loss of the paper mill. Uh, and the loss of our type, type of tanks or, or production of it. And so, um, and we, uh, and the associated losses, economic and not. And so we continue to work with the town, and, uh, we think this, we recommend this borrowing to you. We've done it for several years, hopefully, there'll be a day when we don't have to do that.
Yes, sir. Okay, any questions, Council? There was a vote, something we were, you. Ms. Goldman, you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. So this is a first reading, is that right? This was finally, okay. And we vote next.
It's a nine.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, this was.
And lastly, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Resolution twenty, that is nineteen sixteen.
Okay, it's been moved, um, it's been moved, uh, this is according to twenty, dash forty-two fifty-eight. No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I got no votes, and I had the wrong time, thank you, sir. Um, so they move, uh, Finance Committee Chair Shaw, seconded by, uh, the Locke, Councilman Locke. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, has the ordinance is, uh, approved. Thank you, Ms. Goldman, we appreciate your call.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Okay, Resolution twenty, dash nineteen sixteen, the resolution of the mayor and board of all the first of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor to sign a franchise contract with Papert Medical Services to operate as a provider for medical, emergency medical transportation ambulance within the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, and to provide otherwise with respect thereof. Mr. Um, Ted Parker, with you and, uh, Mr. Parker, the, the C O O, and, um, we have the C O O here also. Uh, Mr. Parker, you came, you called me some time ago, and you wanted to enhance the services of the city of Bastrop to include a lot more. And you, so I applaud you for that, and with code nineteen and all this stuff, all that's going on. Let me applaud you for looking out for employees, looking out for the city of Bastrop, and looking out, you know, for, for Los Paris. Um, change, and this was sort of a merger, merger, and this happens all the time. We had, um, Suddenlink, who was sold to, um, Altis, a French company. And this, to me, is a continuation because, Mr. Parker, um, uh, do you, you want to enlighten the council a little bit on, on the merger acquisition?
Right, first, I'd like to thank you, because we've been doing this for over twenty years, and I appreciate to y'all allowing me to do it. There's a couple of times that a bigger company can offer a lot more. So I called and talked to Mr. Papert, which I've known for over twenty years. Know what kind of company they have, and he could help with employees, with the city. Of course, he has a lot more assets, a lot more resources. But I'd like to introduce him to him, to operate the person, and they can kind of tell you what they do more than me telling you. Okay, good company, but I'd like to.
Well, I'd like to give you your, um, new honor for, for looking out for the citizens of Bastrop and trying to enhance what you've been doing all this time. So it takes a lot, you know, a lot of people have lost pride, and too much pride against something that's going to be better for the people. So Ted, you, your spirit is great, and I personally appreciate, appreciate working with you the short time that I've been here. Um, and thank you for seeking out such a great.
Thank y'all very much. This is Mr. Greg Papert.
Hello, I'm Greg Papert, CEO of Papert EMS. Uh, we're, our corporate office is in Ruston, Louisiana. We, uh, been in business since nineteen sixty-seven. We, uh, have a little over a thousand employees. Uh, we're family-owned and operated, and buck stops here. Uh, I've known Mr. Papert, like you said, over twenty years, and, uh, I think this is going to be a good fit for Bastrop and employees. Every, every one of the employees stay on board, which is positive. Uh, we still have the same local people. Uh, we invested about half a million dollars in new ambulances, uh, for the city of Bastrop, uh, and equipment. So, you know, we're going to redo some remodeling on the station and give them a facelift, but, uh, we're very pleased to be part of Bastrop. We, we hope y'all, uh, sign off on this merger. Mr. Ted's going to stick around, make sure everything's, uh, eyes are dotted, the D's crossed, to move this thing forward and, uh, have a shoulder lean on if we need anything, so.
Can you talk a little bit, just a little bit briefly about the technology and equipment that you, that you bring? Uh, Ted was telling me that when he told me and said, "In this, it's going to be better for the people of Bastrop." And, and, uh, because of the, the technology that they use and the transportation, uh, and that you have your King, you have a King Air out at the airport.
Yes, sir.
And helps up with the.
We have, uh, state-of-the-art equipment on all of our new ambulances, ventilators on every one of the ambulances, which is very important. Uh, CPR machines, so you don't have to do manual CPR on, uh, the patient anymore. So we have them, and, uh, video baryocinescopes for intubation, uh, state-of-the-art heart monitors, uh, power pods. Also, we have an air service, uh, King Air, uh, two hundred, uh, based out of Jackson, Mississippi. We also have a Cessna two fourteen based out of, uh, Ruston. It's about a twenty-five minute flight over here, it's manned twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And what we would use that aircraft for is patients going to Houston, New Orleans, that need specialty surgeries that they don't have around here. So, uh, we're pleased to, uh, have that on board. We also have helicopter, uh, based in Ruston, which, uh, uh, is about, I believe, eighteen-minute flight here. Uh, so pretty quick, before you know it, before the patient's packaged, uh, be ready to go, so.
Rodney, how, how long would it take you to get a patient from here to Houston, sir?
Uh, in the airplane, uh, probably hour and fifteen, twenty minutes.
And there were second counts?
Yes, sir.
Well, gentlemen and ladies, I feel that this will, uh, Mr. Parker.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, one thing that the people are always asking about membership. And I wanted to make sure that y'all knew that they do that ground and air, that on their membership program. It is, but you have to fly out or ground, and it's, it's a good program, I've looked at it.
And Ted, that was one of the first things I asked you, was do they offer memberships? Because the, if you, if you had to pay for, uh, medical evacuation to Houston, or even to Streetville, the cost is in the thousands and thousands of dollars. And they're offering, that's one thing that really caught my eye when you told me that Ted, that they would offer memberships, you can pay membership. And, uh, it's like an insurance, I guess, that.
Yes, sir.
And one insurance would do for both, for land and air.
And that, that's, uh, that's a sixty dollars a year, you know, five dollars a month, that's kind of hard to beat. You can go through McDonald's and get a Big Mac, so. Covers everybody in the household under, I believe, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, but. It's, it's a good program.
Does any of the council members have a question for Mr. Parker?
I'd ask for us that might have a membership. Um, can we transfer that, or do?
Uh, when it, when it runs out, uh, when that membership runs out, uh, you'll just renew with us. That way, that way you will.
My, my question was, membership, you know, moving it from the current, you know.
Yes, sir.
Plans to the one we go to on a year. If you wouldn't take, you'd have to run out.
Yes, yes, sir.
For life.
By law.
So you had to be alive for the membership.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Gray, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker?
Well, I'm not hearing about it.
Well, it just happened so fast, it happened on September the first. It happened overnight, almost. That's why, Mr. Gray, and it's in the back, and I have a phone on it.
You're my parent, they had a talk last night.
Well, they went out front, didn't they?
No, we didn't do, we didn't get the jet, the Phoenix Justice box Friday night.
Okay, I thought we had done silver. Okay. Well, do you have any?
And it was a holiday.
And do you have any concerns? What's your concern?
I guess the thing about, yeah, I guess it's, I was wondering something about, I think, that he wanted Victor coming to see, to ask for proper questions, being that we haven't had proper time to research it.
Well, we have.
It sounds great.
Yeah, we have time to play right now. What cities are you in, what cities in North Louisiana are you in right now?
Webster Parish, Springville, Amenden, Palmer-Hagel, Fongville-Burneys, Ruston, uh, Arcean, uh, Palmer-Hagel, Fongville-Burneys, Ruston.
Okay.
Did I get that?
Yes, you can.
Do you have to approve this two minutes?
Uh, if you don't, we won't, in my opinion, have a continuing. The council is here, but we're, we're approving that he takes, uh, did you take all of Mr. Parker's employees?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Parker. No, we asked questions then.
I gotta have time to research the X.
I don't live, uh. You want to come in this lab, and then we got to do something tonight.
You have the same paramedics, uh, I just wanted to continue.
You say it sounds great, but then, when there's something that may fall on the council, we're going to do our diligence to extra proper, which we have, we need time to research, to X.
Okay, well, is there any question you can ask tonight that will help, that will help this process?
Well, I would like to hear some.
Yes.
If we don't go on this tonight, will the ambulance services stop, or they continue? That's, that's my concern.
I think they continue.
They continue, right? Because we don't want citizens to give a thousand coverage. So whatever we do, we don't want them without coverage. So if we don't go on this tonight, do they still continue to operate?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Do you have, do you mind putting that, do you mind putting that, please?
Yeah, come back, ma'am.
Question.
Uh, this is only. You can't, you can't ask a question. You have to comment on the, the former, it's only attended, you have to do it during the public comment. We can't have people from the audience, anyone, asking, asking questions. That's, this is the reason of the council, and the council is the only one that's been asked a question yet. That's all. Okay.
That's the only thing, it, it, it just.
It's not great, it's not like a normal.
It's a no, no brain of yours.
We have, we have.
I hate to speak for Mr. Ted's part, but, uh, Chris had come down with COVID and was very ill for almost four weeks. And he was concerned about his employees, his wife, his family. That's another reason this, this transpired so quickly. And, uh, you know, with larger conditions on top of that. And, and that's why it all kind of moved pretty quick. And it wasn't to, we just want to be honest with you about that.
Did I understand you say that, uh, you go into Mississippi?
Yes, sir, we, we operate, uh, thirteen counties in Mississippi. Greenville, Clarkstown, Cleveland, Greenville, Cleveland, Clarkstown, Tunica, Tallahassee County, uh, Bobber, uh, Rankin, Madison County, Yazoo County.
One more thing, I, uh, I can't take it for three more years, and I won't be working for them for three more years. I won't be there every day, but I will be connected, but, but, I will thank y'all.
And what, what this is, and I didn't want to get into Ted, I wasn't going to get into the COVID thing, that he, we had that for twenty-nine, twenty-nine days. I was not going to get into that because that's personal. But this happened, there's a lot of things happened to make this happen. And, Mr. Parker, uh, you were looking out for the employees, were. And Mr. Papert, you were looking out for the employees, we have the same paramedics, and I'm just, I'm asking you to accept this gentleman's company to run out the, run out the three years.
Please, I'll make a motion that we accept that.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all, and.
And thank you, Greg, for taking all the employees. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lott, you make the motion?
No, I make the motion.
Miss Moore, I'm sorry, Miss Moore.
I'll say it.
I apologize, Miss Moore. I apologize. I know that it's a big deal, but still, I'm thrilled. So, Miss Moore, and you, Mr. Green, you're second. So it's been moved by, by Miss Moore, second by Councilman Green, Council Lady Moore, Councilman Green, that we have this agreement that's going to extend for the duration. So contract, of course, I would like to, I would like to, the council to come back after you do your, after you do your due diligence. And I'd like your contract tonight to extend to the three years. But I want you to get on the helicopter like I did this afternoon and fly around Bastrop like I did this a lot. And get the feel of it. Okay, and get the feel of it and do, because I would like them having a longer contract, you know, tonight to prove the three years. And to come back right away so they can, they made a half million dollar, so commitment to Bastrop. And that's more than a thirty-six month deal. So next month, I would like for you all to, I want, I'm asking that you approve the extension, I mean, the transfer to where Papert takes the place of their life tonight for the duration of their, we're going to get five years to term.
Three more years from there.
There's three more years left, two years ago we renewed. But I just want you to be clear so we can do your research. I'm asking you next month to let's give them a longer term to approve the extension, but then we work on a longer term because we don't make, you know, half million, million dollar commitments and expect to be in a place where something could upset you in the next, you know, short term. So just want that clearly spoken. Can you comment on Mr. Pierre? Do you have any comments on what I'm asking?
I'll do this, it's probably hard.
Yeah, I know that.
She's got to care.
I know that, okay. I just wanted the council to be clear of what we're going to do to come back to, to get an extended later. But, Mr. Council Lady Moore, make a motion, Green, Mr. Councilman Green, second. Any discussion on it, Greg? All closed? Okay, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, y'all, we look forward to continuing to provide quality service. And we will be having a ribbon cutting after we do some remodeling, and we'd like to invite all y'all out to come look at the new equipment and be able to visit with each, each one of y'all.
And there's some issues I want to talk to you about. I've been there for twenty-five years, so I'd like to talk about some issues.
Thank y'all.
They'll give you a helicopter ride. Thank you, I'm coming. Okay, so, what are we, twenty-nine, twenty-eight?
Eleven.
Yeah, that's bad. Eleven, for you to help, Mr. Green, for now. Okay, I'll give you that.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody? I'm coming tonight to ask about the purchase of about a half acre of property that is around the DMV building. So, as you know, we talked at the meeting last month that we're working to build a new health center for the city of Bastrop and for Warhous Parish. And we need a little bit more property because of the size that our building turned out to be, to make sure that we have enough parking. And so I had some maps, they're not the best, but we worked with the mayor to try to identify, this is about a half acre on the, on the front, and then around the back where the awning is. And I think the next item is going to be appraisal of the property. But we're just wanting, I guess I'm not sure what I'm asking for, because I know we have to be appraised, and then I guess come back at some point to get the final approval. But, but we are requesting that the council consider that half acre itself. And I had some maps at golf, one, six. I see it.
Then Mr. Messenger, did he like it to lay out a new apartment?
He did not, he did the survey work on it, but the architects that are doing the design of the building have, I have about ten different parking policies trying to, trying to make it work.
Gentlemen, you can see the commuter health facility in Green. And you see the parking spaces over next to the Louisiana Department of Public Safety, that's the annex, that where the driver's license offices, motor vehicle. And you see the, the additional parking spots on North Franklin, where it says Ian Franklin. You see the boundaries, and what they're trying to do is get from... They would get a little bit of where the writing says Louisiana Department of Public Safety, you see that? Where the, I can't do the department, we own that little spot, there's several parking spots that we own there. And we, Mr. Nell is asking that we transfer that to them. And the reason is because of your square footage of your building. When a building has a certain, what is it, forty thousand foot feet?
It's about forty thousand.
And, and the ordinance is, Ms. Rogers, you would know more about this than I do. They're, they're required to have about two hundred and twelve or so parking spots, I think, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And, and they need that for regulation. So, and you see where it says North Franklin, North Washington and then North Franklin, you see the Ian Franklin, right there where the Ian is on the street. That is ours where the green, green is, the green grass. And we've given up that. And we have ample parking, or still around the, the, yes, sir, on the west side.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And we have an island there, there was a fountain dedicated to someone there when it was Bastrop National Bank. They had a fountain there, that hadn't been functioning in years, and all of that can be torn down and created, you see that?
I don't have it.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. But, how many jobs you bringing, new jobs, Ms. Green?
At the end of two years, it'll be thirty-five.
Thirty-five new jobs?
New jobs, yeah.
What kind of, what kind of base pay is the bottom, you know, bottom paying job for those?
Our lowest wages are ten dollars an hour, and they go up from there. But a lot of these jobs are higher paying jobs than that. New providers, support side, admin support side.
And you're going to pick the cost of care in that, that, the Frank Teller deal.
So I think, I think I understood you wanted the awnings to remain, and the architects, I believe, that they can cut that down and leave it over where we can take it off.
Yeah, we want to take off all the, just a little bit. We got a telewindow there, right?
Sure.
And I didn't want to ball over the telewindow, you know? And when we get council, we can take your, your, but you're in a herd to do this because your money is ready, isn't it?
We are ready, we have raised all the capital dollars that we need. And we anticipate that the financing package will close somewhere around the, the end of the year. I got a little more push than I thought I was going to have at the last meeting, based on the way everything's kind of lined out with all the final commitments and everything that we got. But yes, we're, we are project ready and ready to, to start at the end of 2020, right at the beginning of 2021.
Now, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and we tried to get a plan where another building could be prepared, and we could tear this building down into a swath of a building. We worked on that for some time with Ted, Mr. King, and you, and others, and that didn't happen.
Did not.
Which was Plan A. And that's the reason we did not apply for a grant, a community development block grant or some other, to do the roof on that building or do any major repairs, because we thought it was possible to look good, because we had great support for that.
Right.
Among the person, people that we were negotiating with, is that correct, Mr. Nell?
Correct.
And it didn't happen, even though it had support at lower levels when it got to the top, when that land, so this is a Plan B. Because that building was so beautiful, we wanted it to be displayed without that blank building being there and it could be moved forward and really protect wealth coming in and out of town and really look great.
So we need to approve Bastrop for.
Yes, sir. Okay.
If I make a motion that we give them permission to get an appraisal for, for this next, next year, about ten, North Washington.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, second by Councilman Lott. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All closed, okay, highest level?
I'm staying, but I didn't get a map, so.
You didn't get it?
I didn't see it.
No, I gave, you know, you passed two. You passed both of them to Mr. Greg.
I did not pass, no, didn't.
I gave them to you, and I, Mr. Lott, Mr. Greg, we can go to vote.
I don't want to be in the.
I know we don't, but I asked you to pass one down. I'm sorry, Mr. Greg, I gave you two maps, so.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's happy. Okay. Let's see, where are we?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay, declaring an emergency. Mr. Israel, please come forward. Listen, Mr. Ron Israel, he owns, you know, the apartment stores, a merchant here, and a businessman. And, and, okay, Mr. Israel has a presentation for the council. And, and it centers around the wrecked building that was burned in, was that March? Was it March?
I'm sorry, door was locked, I didn't know. What was the question?
What, was that in March?
I know, it was in April.
April?
April fifteenth.
Okay.
So, what I did was put a little, basically a slideshow together to try to go over this and show you what has transpired since this fire. But we first start by saying that I was extremely grateful on April fifteenth, because I got called six thirty in the morning saying that the Jacks building was on fire, and there was a flame shooting thirty feet into the air. And by six forty-five, I was down behind the buildings, and it didn't look good to me, I said, it looked pretty awful. And what I saw was a fire really doing their job. I was so impressed. I mean, my goodness, these, these guys attacked it from the front and the back, and they, they worked hard, and I watched them, I went around and around, and I was just, as I say, grateful. Grateful, because I own four buildings on that hall. And I certainly didn't want to lose any of them. But in the time since then, I, I think I have, I have great deal of concern. This is what the building looked like on April fifteenth during the course of the fire. I want you to look at the upper left corner of the second story of that building. Kind of hard to see, but there are two windows and a brick wall between the two windows. The plywood that covered the windows is closely colored, the bricks are very hard to see, but it's there. My building is that white building, single story building on the left. So, as I say, I was grateful, I was happy the fire men did what they needed to do, did the right job. But I kept watching the building and, and noticing that bricks were beginning to thaw from the building. And by the time we got to June seventh, look at that upper left corner. The middle section of brick had completely fallen out. And as you can see, there's not much there. All you have is a wall on one side and a wall on the other side. I was very concerned. And then, then in the past two weeks, hurricane came through, and that was it. And what's happened is that that brick wall that was standing there, thawed onto the roof of my building, caused unbelievable damage. Now, let me pull up that here. Just to show you the timeline one more time, April fifteenth, upper left corner, it's intact, June seventh. March, that didn't end by any means. And then you can see again, April, August twenty-seventh. Now the time I want to focus in on is early to mid-June. Because I'm, I'm so concerned about this matter, that I called Fire Chief Trotter, and I said, you know, come and look at this with me. I think this has the potential to really hurt my building. And I think something needs to be done. So he came down with Prevention Chief William, and they looked at it, talked about it. I didn't get any definitive answers from them, but I, you know, they looked at it and discussed it with me. So a few days later, I, I picked up the phone, I called, verified. And I said, man, I think I've got a real issue here. There is a problem that is going to affect me. That's the problem right there. Now, if you look at that cause of, of the upper floor, and that open brick area, look at the wall. See how heavily charged it is? See which heat must have been in that section? Well, that's a hundred year old wall, approximately, I don't know the exact age of the building, but it's about a hundred years old. Standing there all that time, just bricks and mortar, nothing else. And now, I say to the mayor, look, I can see through the sky through the thing, through the window. There's no roof on this building. I said to the mayor, you know, I think everything that held that wall in place is gone. The attic system, the roof system, gone. I said, I think we need to do something about this. This is an interior view of the apartment that was in the Jacks store, Willie the Herb. As you can see, I'm standing inside that apartment, there is nothing there. There is no roof, there's no, there's just a parroted wall and the wall below it, and on the other side of my building.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
The city of Bastrop owns this building?
No, it's privately owned.
It's private?
Yes.
So what I asked for was an assessment. I wanted to know, I said, my feeling is that this is the problem. But I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but it sure doesn't look like it to me. And I had communications with the mayor one back and forth. Emails, texts, phone calls.
Yes, Mr. Green, you have a question?
Yeah, have anybody spoken to the owner of the building?
Uh, Mr. Ron, would you address that, who just speak to the owner of the building?
So, as some of you may know, there's a. So, as some of you may know, there's an arson investigation going on concerning this building.
But can you answer Mr. Green's question?
Not, I mean the process of doing it.
Okay.
The owners of the building, going in for just a short time, just a few months, have left and bought up a wife. There's no way to get in touch with these folks. I tried to phone them, but I got in touch with their insurance company. Who told, they tell me that they had no, they had no responsibility for this.
Did they have active insurance?
They did. It was a company called Nautilus Insurance.
They work the same like on, like on residential property, like the insurance supposed to cover it? Like the next door and the neighbors?
Well, normally there's liability.
Mr. Green, let me get your use of this mic. So, your question. I repeat your question, Mr. Green.
I was wanting to do the.
Just stop in the background.
Do the insurance, do the, do the owner insurance supposed to cover?
So I have not, I have not seen their insurance policy. Uh, I, I don't think that their insurance company released that policy to me. That was a question that I actually had. I wondered the, the city attorney at one point denied access.
Well, let me, let me address something. Go ahead, Mr. Green. I'm gonna address the access, denied access.
Yeah, can I finish the presentation if I'm, if that's possible?
Well, if you don't mind, would you answer questions as we go along? So we won't have to go back and try to pick questions in the middle of the presentation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna everybody's there. This is my last one.
Go ahead, Peter.
Sophia, is there any way that the city can fix, help the owner of the property?
I've had a discussion with the mayor, uh, and it first came up, my position to the mayor, the same position I'm telling you all here today.
Can you touch the microphone, Sophia? Let, let me get to.
I'll stick loud enough.
Okay.
I look at these issues that you're asking a question about, this gentleman is discussing, as issues between two private landowners, two adjacent landowners. It's an insurance issue. You file a lawsuit if you have to. Name BBC Insurance Company. They have to review it to you some point in time. I'm not gonna give you legal advice on that, secure on legal advice on that. Of course, the municipality is concerned. If that's not our responsibility.
Okay, Mr. Israel. I asked you, had you, in all fairness, I asked you, have you contacted the insurance company? And was it insurance? You, you said yes. I, you said, you felt that it was sizable. You used the word sizable. Use the word sizable, insurance company. I asked you, did they have insurance?
I, I was told.
Yeah, that they had a sizable policy. Use the word sizable.
I, I, you know, okay, well, I did. I was told that, actually.
Yeah, I was told we did.
But I didn't know that.
And I asked you, had you contacted them? Then, the last time we saw each other at Walmart last week, I said, did you contact them? You said, I told you I contacted them. That's what you told me. You did not tell me the results of the conversation. You did not tell me that they said they can't or they don't, whatever Jeff said, that's it.
They, I had contacted them. They denied that they had the responsibility. Back in June, I contacted them again this week. They still deny that they hold very responsibility.
Okay. Um, now, uh, you wanna go on with your presentation? Cause I've got a few questions that I wanna ask you.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, let me, let me show you. As I say, that wall right there was my big concern. Cause nothing was holding it up. And it was so heavily damaged. This is what happened. I asked and asked for help. Didn't get it all along before this happened. It did not happen. No help came. And now, if you look on the left, you can see the back third of the wall has come crashing down into my roof. On the right, you see a closer view of that same thing.
So you might tell them.
I noticed that on the back third of the wall, there's still two thirds of the wall left to come down.
Okay. Would you go ahead and tell them the council what help you asked us, the city? What did you ask the city of Ashford to do? Just be specific.
Very specifically?
Yes, sir.
I asked to, uh, I told you that I believe that there was some areas of the city code that would apply to this situation. I asked to meet with the city attorney. I was denied the opportunity.
Let's talk about why you were denied. And I told you, you called me. I was in the city. I was in the city attorney's office at four P M. on Monday. And you called, you, I told you I was going to see him. And I invited you over. But the city attorney, no, I told you to, to come and talk with him. But when I went in the city attorney's office, we were sitting there talking about your building. You called and you wanted to come over. Is that true or not?
Absolutely.
Yes. But the city attorney, I said, the reason who can't have an expert team discussing with you is because he's the judge and this matter's gonna come before him, the matter of the wall. Is that true?
You may remember a conversation later on here we had, where I said to you, is it absolutely necessary for him to be the city judge in this case? Maybe we need some legal opinions over here and bring in another judge from another community.
Well, I had gotten a legal opinion. I'm gonna give you something. Mr. Shaw, pass these down and give Mr., give Mr., uh, Mr. Israel one. And then, Mr. Green, will you?
Yeah, this is a, I don't know what opinion you're about to show me, but.
No, no, no. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let's go on with your.
This, this opinion is coming after the fact.
No, I understand, but I want to get clear what you were asking, and I want to, or you said, do then act. And I wanted to ask you, what specifically did you ask the city to do with the building? What did you ask us to do? What did you want us to do?
I very specifically told you that I believe that this was an emergency need, that the city needed to act and declare this, to get this declared as a destroyed, uh, building that worth saving it right now.
And to do what? Tear it down? What did you want done to the building?
This, I believe the city has the right in a case where there is imminent property ambition to, uh, yes, to declare that the, this thing needs to come down.
And after the declaration, what did you want us to do with the building?
All I wanted was the wall greenery. And there's, there's no reason why it couldn't have been.
Okay, hold it. Go ahead, Mr. Green. Wait, answer, ask the people.
Hold it. Yeah.
Okay, here. Yeah, that's fine.
My question is, so when we do tear it down, was tear it down, the owner of the building can hold us responsible, right?
Yes. Okay. Now, let me, let me get, I think I have my microphones here. But, Mr., I, I'm gonna let you finish your presentation. But look at, look at this that I just gave you. And look at the, look at the one with the bricks, it's about two from the back. Okay? The first time you talked to me about that before this crash, I looked at the building with you and in fact, I think we did like four trips, four meetings, I believe, in all. I'm the son of a bricklayer, Mr., Mr. Israel. My father was a brick contractor. And do you see that, what it says there about a, uh, return corner?
Where, where are we looking?
There's the bricks.
Is this the main?
Yes, that thing. Okay. So if you look at that, you'll see a return corner. Let's say this is the building. And you lay a return corner, that's sort of a pyramid down the sides. And you do that for a reason, okay? The whole strength of the structure, you shaking your head like that? My daddy was a bricklayer.
I, I'm not saying that that is a wreck. I'm saying that there is a problem with your reasoning.
Wait, just hold it. You hadn't heard my reasoning. Just listen, please. You do that corner.
I'm shaking my head. That's all I'm doing.
Oh, just hold, just, you, you said I didn't do anything. So I just wanna explain, I just wanna explain. You lay bricks, you start one whole brick here and you, you block another brick here. Then you do a half brick and a whole brick on this side. And then a half brick here and a whole brick. And you have this pyramid down here. And the, the support structure of your wall depends upon this, this hole that's returned corner. You shaking your head? Please listen. Please listen. Okay, so this is the front. This is the front of the, of the building. Just hold it. This corner is the strength of the building. And as you go down the side, when you do your corners, you, you join them and you build up here, okay? And you do the same thing. Now, you asked to, for us to tear the wall down. If we.
Actually, what I first asked did not be to tear the wall down.
What'd you ask?
I asked for you to get an opinion from somebody who knows.
Well, let me, let me say that.
I said to you that this is important, that you get this opinion before the wall comes down. Are you reviews?
I came, I came back to Ms. Goldman and I said, Ms. Goldman, basically, I see, I think we may need to get them an engineer. Is that true, Ms. Goldman?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Goldman asked me as a clerk. She said, well, Mayor, who's gonna pay for it? Is that kinda true, Ms. Goldman? Who's gonna pay for it? Or are we gonna take city funds and pay for a private building? Now, you know the Hart Rock Hotel in New Orleans, correct? The city of New Orleans did not go in there and do any construction or any kind of anything on that. All they did was put a perimeter around that. By law, we can't spend money on private, on private property. By law, we cannot go in and then, and wait, and then I knew that if we did, when we finally got around to the building coming down, this wall coming down, that I know from being a bricklayer, as a brick contractor's son, that this whole wall, the weight of this wall holds this front up. If you weaken and lower anything, then this front could collapse onto Franklin Street.
Mayor, that is going to happen eventually anyway.
Well, well, if we had torn it down, instead of it crashing on your building, it could have crashed toward the front. Go ahead.
I had a presentation and I feel like I've been completely interrupted by it. And if you have things to say, I appreciate it. If you hold till I'm done.
I would remember, um, um, to move the peak track and go back into five minutes and thirty-two seconds. So please, you gotta finish it. Go ahead.
So, you know, let me, let me shift back a bit. So you're talking about the turn of the brick. Okay. Now, the wall, the charred wall there is the wall alongside my building. The turn, at that point in time, was probably about three feet. And what I said to you, Mayor, was that if we get a tropical force storm, it's very likely that this wall is coming down.
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay, now, what, you probably need to look at the city code because in the city code, it talks about the importance of protecting property and adjoining property. And here we have a circumstance where this wall is gonna come down despite what you said. It was gonna come down if you had hurricane force winds. This is the crane that was left. A literally ton of bricks that came crashing down on my roof. You see that crack in the foreground? That's part of my roof. Up until now, we've been fairly fortunate because we haven't had a crane. And yet, if you look on the left, you can see the rafters totally destroyed. And the only thing that's holding this roof up to this point is there's a fourth wall behind that kitchen. On the right, as I say, not much rain here in the last two weeks. And on the right, you'll see mold growing on the ceiling. See that mold? And it's not getting any better. I'm watching it day by day grow. Now, I want you to look at something. Here's the front of the building, okay? This building is gonna come down. The question is, is the city gonna do the right thing? Now, on the left, I'm on the front sidewalk, looking up. You see the windows there? You see that there's nothing there? It's like a Hollywood movie scene. All it is, is a brick wall. Look at the arrow on the right. You probably don't see much there, but let me show you a closer. See that crack right there? That's the corner, the front corner of the building, right by the sidewalk. It's an old crack. It's been there for many, many years. I've watched it. People try to repair it. But now, there is nothing behind that wall. And the very next time we get a hurricane, hurricane force wind, that wall's coming down on the rest of my roof. And the front wall is coming down on a pedestrian walkway. This is a city issue. This is something you guys need to concern yourself with because this could either result in a death. It could, it could result in heavy damage to the cars that are parked on that street. I wanna say that we spend a lot of time here at Ashford talking about the importance of the historic history. And, you know, it's our heritage and all, all that sort of thing. There's a picture, undated picture. I'm not sure exactly when this was, but I'm looking at the cars. I'm thinking it's nineteen forties. This is probably seventy-five, eighty years ago. My building is that bus station. When I first came to Ashford, I had people tell me, oh, yeah, I used to wait for buses right, right down the street. Later on, it became George Boone Insurance. And he ran it for many, many years until he brought in a young guy named Ray Norris. Became Boone Norris Insurance. And when Ray decided, as Ray Norris decided to retire, I bought it. I had it twenty-five years ago. So, the building still left, one that burned. That building is coming down. Either bit by bit or all at once. It is coming down. Now, I'm asking you because I have a very serious problem here. I cannot begin to repair my building. Because guess what? I can repair that, that area and the rest of the wall from crumbling down, I got the same problem all over again. And there are areas of the city code that pertain to this. And I really hope and expect that you guys will see the need to deal with it.
Let, let me say something. We have, and Mr. Israel referred the hurricane. We had Ms. Doris Carter write down a certified letter. Is that true, Ms. Carter?
It was a day or so before.
That it was before.
Yeah.
Cause she said it. She did not know.
No, no. We talked about it that day. So I didn't write it that day because electricity's wrong.
And we get after it.
But did you know that it had fallen, Ms. Carter? And you, you went home to work on that letter, didn't you? I said, you went back to home because the power was out there.
I didn't even know.
Yeah, we didn't have. And we don't know what time it went down. But if you look at this, Mr. Israel, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. You were so laser focused on getting the city in my mind, that's in my mind. Your focus was totally on the city tearing that wall down in half or doing something with it. And I could not understand why you didn't brace the wall. Look at these pictures. You, on your roof, I didn't understand why you didn't do something as simple. Look at the first one. You see the wind force that gave you? And a thirty, a thirty-degree angle? This is so common if you visit places like New York where one building's lower than the other. You always see this kind of thing where a person will brace and do a thirty, sixty, ninety triangle for strength. Okay? And protect that. My feeling is, and I wanted to say it, but you and I got real tense and I didn't wanna go further, but I don't think you did all you could do. You could have done. You could've done something like this. You didn't do all you could do. You could've done this. I don't think you did what was common that any one. I'll just give this. We're working on a, a shopping center in Pineapple Park, Pennsylvania. My dad told the, 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 the person there, that there's a storm coming, you need to brace the wall. The concrete is on south, on South Twenty-Fifth Street in Pineapple Park, Pennsylvania. That wall blew open because they didn't do a simple thing like you see here. And you could've done this.
Mayor?
No, first of all, I'm saying you could've done this. You could've done this. This works. It's very simple. It's a two by twelves, a two by sixes, a two by fours, or something. Thirty degree angle gives you the best strength. Now, you could, I'm not saying, because we got trees, oak trees, that's, that's, um, forty inches in di- in, uh, in diameter. Two houses, we got about a hundred, a hundred damaged property at least. Okay, with oak trees. Your building is not unique to damage with this hurricane. Now I'm not sure that we could've done anything. I believe that if we started from day one, from June, and gone through due process, that everything that we could've done, spent city money, which is illegal, to get an engineer study to say, what can we do about this? Okay? I don't believe that we could have.
It is periphracy and it's illegal.
No, I'm saying, but I don't believe if we had started on day one, when you came in April, and it's September now, or the hurricane was what, the twenties? Eight? Between, okay, twenty-seven. Between April, May, June, July, August, September. I don't believe that we could've gone through a legal process. If we had, when I came and said, Ms. Goldman, I think we need to get Denman to look at this. And she said, who's gonna pay for it, Mayor? Okay? And, and I talked with our counsel and I called others. I even called the lawyers and asked, what did y'all do?
You say you talked with the counsel?
No, a, a counsel, attorney, attorney counsel. Yeah, the lawyer. I talked with the lawyer. And we tried to figure out, how could the city get involved? And all we saw was liability. I, I know we have the ordinance. But how can we spend money? And then, why are you going to get that? I talked with people who were interested in the beautification. I heard comments like, if we have one gate and hole, if we ever have this in the city of Baskin. If we ever have one building that looks like that in the city of Baskin. If we ever have one gate and hole, like if you go through towns, uh, like Risner and Gilbert, uh, if you go through those towns, that's what you see is gaps in the structure. There is a person who, who we've been talking to who expressed an interest in getting the building. Now you think that we could've gone through and done something legally with due process, server notices. We have to let the people know. We have to locate someone. I asked Ms. Carter to send a certified letter and also a letter that's not certified because the letter that's not certified will find its way through court and the person would undoubtedly get it with forward mail, but the certified will come back to us, happens all the time. Now I'm not confident at all that we could've gone through all the steps that we've, that we've, uh, have to go through to protect the city from going on someone's property and destroying their property. I don't believe we could've gotten it done.
You know what, Mayor, I didn't care because you know what? You could have tried. You had a problem here. It was a very evident problem. There are city ordinance areas that pertain to this danger.
Pull up the ordinance.
And.
Move it up.
And I asked you to please move on. Instead, I got texts after text, no response, response, no response. You know, I got hemming and hawing.
You were so laser focused on the city's spending city money to solve the problem. You did not, you did not do what you could've done. You could, you did not do what you could've done. To protect your own property. You didn't do it, sir.
No.
You didn't do something as simple as brace the wall.
But you are absolutely incorrect, okay? Now let me just say this to you.
I'm just saying you didn't brace the wall.
In all the times that we discussed. In all the times that we discussed. Did you once say to me, well, you know, you might be able to brace your wall, that wall? I don't, the, the bricklayer's son said nothing. So I mean, that's why I was asking. I said to you, look, I am not an engineer. I don't know exactly what's the problem, but it sure age looks like it to me.
Well, every time we talk, you were laser, laser focused on the city's ordinance.
Exactly. So you know what, let me try. After I started talking to you. Talking to you about this, I started looking at some of the city ordinance, and I don't know the city ordinance. And there's, there's, you know, interesting things here, which is, yeah, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer either, Mayor Carter. So I don't know exactly how these laws might pertain. And that's why I wanted to talk to Mr. Pierre. Okay? So I needed the help of some, some, somebody who had authority in these matters. Well, if you look at, uh, your ordinance fifteen dash four two three seven, it says, and in the bottom of the page, first page I gave you, the city of Baskin may enforce health, safety, and welfare statutes and ordinances or otherwise seek to eliminate blighted property, unsafe structures, and equipment. Now, it talks about what blighted property is. And it says, that there's a list of things, and one of the things it says is hazardous or, or property that because of their physical condition are considered hazardous to persons or property. Okay? This is exactly what I was saying. I thought you know it.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you, if you read the highlighted areas that I just showed you, okay, this is, these are areas where the city may act if there is blighted property, if it's hazardous to person or property. Okay? Now, I didn't know what more you need. And what I needed, I can say what I needed that I didn't get. I needed to talk to the city attorney. I needed to say, hey, I'm reading this stuff and to me, it sure looks like they're, it pertains. That there is a law in the city.
Let me address the blighted property. We have a budget that deals with blighted property. And we have to go through, no matter if it's a burned down house or a burned down building, commercial building, we have to go through due process. We have to contact people and we have to make sure that they know that we're tearing bricks down.
I didn't think that's exactly what you should've done, like you should've started in April.
Mister, um, we were hoping that, that you would sue them. Okay? We were hoping that you would take legal action. You're shaking your head.
I'm shaking my head. I never once heard you ask that question.
Now, wait, I, I, when you, when we spoke, I said, Ron, I've got three hundred trees in this town that's leaning towards someone's trailer house. This is before the hurricane. And I, I made an example. I said, I've got a guy, my daughter owns a house, and a tree, a rotten tree, and a limb fell out and took the electrical off. And I told you. I said, I had to take and get in touch with my daughter and have her write to God a letter with pictures saying, your limb has taken my power down. I didn't notify you, but I'm notifying you now that the tree is still there so I can sue you when the tree falls on my house the next time. Now, did we have that conversation? I asked you to do that. I asked you to notify them.
It was before the hurricane.
No, it was before the hurricane. It was not, this is. This is, well, you don't remember the conversation. But I talked to you about what I felt an owner should do. That you had the responsibility to drive this as, and, and we talked about, and I'm not gonna get into and expose everything that we said. But I couldn't figure out why you didn't go after them legally. I couldn't figure it out. I couldn't figure out why you didn't file something.
Very simply.
And I couldn't figure out.
Very simply. Very simply, there are city ordinance that pertain to this matter. And you needed to have looked them up.
No, we, we didn't.
If you have blighted property that is endangering other property.
On the fifteen dash four two thirty seven. I went through this with, 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 I started there several times, looking for, looking for a way to get this done fast track. Okay? We went through, you see the highlights here on this run? And I highlighted a paragraph. I highlighted a paragraph that I thought we could move. Um, and I'll try to read it to you if I see it. I've got it marked on my computer. To say we did nothing, we were trying to find a way, we did not know that hurricane law was going to be here within a week.
You know what? I told you that it is coming.
Yeah, right. And, and we could not do it, it was not possible for us to do anything in that lifetime. It wasn't possible.
Yeah, well, you know what?
To go through the due process.
You start the wall rolling and you move from there. And if you can't get it done, you can't get it done, but you have to attempt it yourself.
We did not tell you everything we were trying to attempt. I even, we even contacted a person who was interested in buying it. I did not want a gate and hole in a way that, that ought.
You're gonna have a worse than that.
Mister Ron, sometimes you roll the dice and it comes up snake eyes. Okay? But, but our, your responsibility as a private business owner was to protect your business from that, from that thing. And to go through the legal processes. Now have you taken any legal action from the day you came to us from the fire to now? Have you taken any legal action? No, Ron was, I felt you were so laser focused and I said, Ron, I can't talk to you. Just come and sit down with me. You know we did that because we've been friends for a long time.
Yeah, let me say something about that. I don't want people misperceiving the situation. Okay, Mayor Carter and I have known each other for probably thirty years. Over the years, he's been a customer at my store. I was a customer of his when he owned a radio station. And we've always gotten along. This is not a personal.
No, it's not.
But I will say this, Mayor. This is a terrible failure of yours.
You, you expressed that. That's your opinion and I do appreciate, I appreciate that. But I wish you'd been open, more open, we could've discussed, remember this, because I asked you. I asked you about certain things. You told me about the roofer and, and whatever. But we were trying to do it legally. Well, do you know how long it takes? We were trying to preserve the town. We were trying to balance things, Ron. We were trying to not get something torn down that would make the town look bad. Because one building torn down with an alley up through there destroys the whole downtown. So we were trying to balance and talk to people about, look, I even called and got into, uh, Vantage. We were talking with someone at Vantage about the historic. You see the Warstone National Bank Building in Monroe? You see all of that? Vantage's got millions of dollars. The building next to us, just to the south of us, that, uh, that old bastard high school, fourteen million dollars or so went into that. There is money for these buildings. You alluded to that picture right there, which shows that, that, that building is a hundred years old. There's funds to restore that. Vantage Healthcare took the, you're shaking your head like this. I'm telling you truth.
You have run at a time. Now look. Right now, I have a crater in the back of my roof. And I can't even begin to fix it until we get this building condemned. And that wall needs to come down.
If we take it down, I will not touch it unless we have an engineering study. That's what I told you.
Now we move to the engineering study after, you know.
Well, the question comes, who pays for it? Who pays for the engineering study? And then, I just don't feel that you've done what you should do.
Do you really need a full engineering study or do you need a hot call from the mayor?
No, no, we took, you and I talked about taking it down. You and I talked about taking it down to half the size roughly so, so that it wouldn't fall over. This is way before the hurricane. We talked about taking it down half the size. Really not.
We talked about.
And then, my question was, who's gonna do that? I'm not gonna do it unless Denman engineers tell me, if you take it down half the size, Henry, then what's the effect? Gonna be on the front collapsing. Now we could, and we even talked about good tinkle around the front of the building to make it safe for people so they know nobody walked on the sidewalk. You talked about that. You brought that up. Didn't you? You even brought it up. You talked about the building falling out.
Here's why I'm standing here right now. That wall needs to come down at this point. The city needs to condemn that building. And by the way, not only is it a structural hazard to my property and people who walk by, but it's also, and Ms. Carter and I have had this discussion, it's also environmental. Look in the window. Walk by there, smell the odor, the mold coming from them. People walk by that street daily and they're reeling in spores of mold. And nothing's been done.
Go ahead.
Ms. Carter, what's the process of condemning a property?
Turn through your microphone, this is a small thing.
You can't do no better. You got all night. You had a mic.
Ms. Carter, what's the process of condemning a property? Okay. For Ms. Carter, what's the process of condemning a property?
It's a whole page, I think it's about.
Well, it's, it's, it's a process. The thing about it, as, as Mr. Visal said, you gotta notify the owner. We've got to notify the owner and take it through due process. That takes time. And.
But I know you've done, you've done first sale.
It took me eight months to get a house torn down.
Okay, so, I was just trying to give, like, you know, a timeframe.
Yeah, and I was a local, local resident. This, this, we don't know where they are.
Okay, because that's what he's saying, he cannot condemn the property, your insurance company won't do anything.
First of all, the insurance company for the people is a woman who owns that property. One person, a woman, who lives in Hawaii, but I understand. That insurance company, I talked to them, texted and emailed that port. And as recently as today, they told me once again, they don't want any responsibility. They will do nothing. The woman, I, I don't know how to get in touch with her. Of course, did you know how to get in touch with her?
We use the address that's on, that the tax assessor, that owns the house, I mean, that's on the property. That's the only thing we can do is use the address as registered with the tax assessor's office as the owner of the property.
So you can't use their letter of consent?
No, not yet. I didn't expect to get a back visit. It's probably gonna take a couple of weeks.
It's mailed on the twenty, what, when? Last weekend of August?
Whatever, like, working, somebody, please, I'm, I'm just out of respect. I have received it back. I have received it, I would like to know if it's, I have.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We could go, oh, and I'm.
Yeah.
I suggest we finish.
Finish it, ma'am.
And. And expand the agenda to go to executive session with Mr. Pierre.
Okay. Well, Mr. Pierre is a, is a judge, we can get around that.
We need to get beyond that, with him being a judge. We need his legal opinion to say.
Yeah, he need, he needs to give y'all directions as to what to do here.
Okay.
And don't, don't discuss anything else on this till, till you hear back from the city attorney.
Right. Thank you for the, uh, interview. But I, I do think that people have their say.
Yes, sir, I think so, but it's, it's about some more.
We're gonna go into executive session, we're not, Mr. Ron, you can, now you can't go into executive session.
No.
No, you can't do that. But Mr. Pierre will advise the council. But Mr. Pierre will advise the council as to what our limitations are. But Ron, I think you.
I don't, you guys will not be Mr. Pierre's, the judge, in this case, he needs to advise the city.
I don't think this probably will open for the government, you think it is?
They can do it. Well, the part about.
I think this will be somewhere else.
Yeah, the part about, the part about, about what we were initially trying to do is get the, is get them in, in Brown Court and have declared, and then they would have, that would force them, if they didn't show up.
I guess.
And that was the quickest way.
Okay, well then, ladies, we don't need to go in the second session, but wait until you get somebody a third party.
The quickest way, we would serve them and then take action if they didn't respond. And I wanted to make sure, and I asked Mr. Ron, and you gave me the name of the insurance companies and the lawyers, right?
Ron, did twice, two months ago.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, but thank you so much for your presentation and we're not ignoring it, we want the same thing we want, but we wanna do it right.
Let me just, why don't we say this, time is actually, as you, we talked about wanting a big open space, that building, the burn, it, it's not really to be savable, I don't believe. My building is shortly gonna become unsavable. And I will, if, if it gets to that point, if the mold keeps growing, I can't repair my roof because I'm worried about the front of the wall, but then I won't have to turn this. And you were gonna have that gap in the same area.
Now, we do have some trucks, some blue trucks, if you want one, I can get you some trucks.
It's not, I mean, I called the roper up there and the roper said to me, look, this is structurally unsafe, I cannot do this, I cannot cover it. And he said, the hole is so massive that the waters will run under anyway and into the buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, if I, if I knew that the rest of that wall wasn't standing, I could get this, I could get this building fixed, save my building. But building burned, I, it's pretty, I, I, it's very pretty on the facade, but guess what? It's going away. One year, the other, it could have gone away.
Well, you, you and I talked about taking it down to one story, we, we had a lot of conversations about this, but I do not want a gaping hole if we can prevent that.
Well, you're gonna have a gaping hole where my property is.
Well, there's a person who wants to buy. There's a lady that, that Ms. Carter and I have been talking with, there's a person who wants to buy, who has the means to fix it, okay? To have the means to do whatever, get his engineers in there, his architect, and do that, and.
And as this person approached the owner.
They're waiting to see, we can get them.
Yeah, that's what they, they're trying to do.
If you drag your feet, I don't think it's gonna work.
Thank you, Ron. I really do appreciate you and we do care. Thank you, sir. Um, item number 14, Resolution 20-1917, a resolution of the mayor board of all persons of city of Vaston to authorize the mayor to execute a contract to bring Rostand to Louisiana to provide S, uh, assistance with Louisiana CARES Act and FEMA recovery, uh, from Hurricane Laura. As you know, that there are, there is, uh, there are benefits under the CARES Act, the first certain expenses for settlement has done a great job in, in singling out and, and securing about $58,000, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
Uh, we got 54.
54, okay. Um, and I applaud that, that this, this company is professional, uh, that this, recommended to us by financial advisor, uh, Steve Masaka was in a webinar, and I told him that I couldn't make it with, with the information, because he's mayor of the city in South Louisiana. And he got back with me and said, Mayor, I think you need to look at this, and we've got Ms. Goldman and, uh, and some of our staff on the, on webinar with this company, and they perform admirably for other cities and recovering dollars. But we're not specialists, I'm not a specialist at identifying everything in the CARES Act, nor am I a specialist, uh, nor are we specialists at, um, at putting every single thing, and we fought hard to document the damages in our parish, to work with the Homeland Security here to build us to the destination that we, the declaration that we have, and that declaration is, you know, kind of, we, uh, with, uh, with individual assistance. And we're trying to get, because we've got tons and tons of debris that's gotta be removed and we're, we're trying to do that. So this company does that. Ms. Goldman, what was your opinion basically on, on our meeting with them?
I think they'll do a good service to us in the cause of the timing of the year. We've had some major catastrophes with COVID-19, now we got Laura, taxes, and it's upon us. So I, I think they'll do good, we can try and see how it works, I'm willing to work with them, um, and see, uh, how to get the money. They're changing the rules of this Louisiana CARES Act weekly. And you have to stay on top of it, if you don't stay on top of it, you lose money that we, we can rightly get back. So I would love for y'all to give it a chance.
So Ms. Goldman, will you be the fourth person for this?
Yes, sir, they have to get all records to me, I've got a stack already like this to stack, to scan it and do them.
And what is the cost?
They, uh, the money that we get, they'll get a percentage of that.
And it's like 5%.
Yeah, it's really low.
And they can, I believe charts that, that fee is reliable, so I don't think it'll cut into a penny as I understand it, of what we get.
And on the FEMA, you get administrative money, they would take, normally take my salary and pay me for that, but it'd be well worth it to give it to them. I don't get the money, I just have a chip.
You see, I'm looking at you and go, yes, sir.
Now, what about, does James Marner spin into this, with this group?
That's a good question, uh, Ron, I'm glad you asked. No, the group is a company that does this for cities.
No, I understand that, I'm talking about locally here, somebody's got to make contact with them quickly.
Uh, well, James, James made contact with FEMA, you know, he made contact with the federal government side. This person would be like a consultant for us to help us recruit as much as we can, because I think we're leaving a lot on the table, yeah, and it would help us a lot, because our cost, our COVID cost is, is greater than people think it is, and our Hurricane Laura cost is tremendous. We've got, we've got tons and tons of debris and that we want out of our communities, and we don't know exactly how that's gonna carry out, whether you look at the garment plant parking lot, uh, and, and the reason we allow the garment plant parking lot, we blessed place, every time we cut down a street, we take it out there, and there are some people who've been cleaning up, taking out there. But the option was, if you go on K Street right now, that's in your district, Mr. Mayor, go to the end of K Street and see what's happening, they're dumping. So rather than dumping at the end of, of streets, and then Mr. Prentice District, from your district, we'd rather put it in Mr. Locke's district. It's easier to pick up in Mr. Locke's district. So, so that's what was happening, people trying to avoid cheap damn police person. And if, we were gonna have a mess on our hands if we didn't do this in a controlled fashion. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, I'm looking.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Shaw?
I can sit.
Has made a motion and Councilman Green has a second motion and a discussion on the paper. Yeah, I have the, that is approved.
I have one quick question, Ms. Goldman, what's the timeframe about?
I'm not really sure.
Two hours?
Yeah, we're right there.
We started at 6:11.
Okay, let's try, let's try it over. Um, next one, the next item. 15, uh, discussion specific of the November 3 presidential day, uh, presidential list, I'm recommending that we let our people off so they can exercise their vote, make this a holiday. Uh, let's make it quick, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
So moved by, so moved by Mr. Locke, second, by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw. A discussion on the paper? Thank you.
You want to address it?
Yes, sir.
I want to say.
Yes, sir. Uh, 16, I, permission, let's table this, uh, 16, can we table 16?
It's a great idea.
Uh, who make the motion? Who make the motion? Who make the motion? Who table the, the, uh, ABS, AVI course until our next meeting? And, uh, if we have any questions, I've got, um, this machine will help us get tournaments in here. And the tournament, Mr. Locke, did you see the?
On the menu.
Yeah, no, did you see, Mr. Locke, did you see the, the report on what, how much money the, uh, 2014 baseball did for Western Room?
What's that?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, they had 2014, you know? Every family spends an average of $500 on travel costs. So please, I'm gonna be communicating with you about this machine, what it'll do, it'll, it will enable us to help.
You need to go.
I'm gonna do.
Y'all need to go.
Okay, now, uh, discussing action, homeless shelter funding. All in favor? Ladies, take aim. Okay, there, I said it, it's stable. Uh, 17, action, homeless shelter funding. Um, did, did everyone get their questions answered about, uh, the homeless shelter? Did you talk with Mr., 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 uh, city attorney about the homeless shelter? Mr., uh, Mr. Christie?
I understand, but what I was asking is, uh, she, what's her revenue, five bucks?
Uh, the church, the diocese, she's right there. The diocese, she explained all of that last time, the diocese is, we're just supplement, we're not.
I was explaining.
Yes, okay. Okay, um, so this was about, uh, providing some assisted fund for human beings. We do it for dogs and cats, we should do it for human beings. So it's just 10,000, uh, we just, $1,000, we get 10,000 a month from, from bingo. Thank you, Ms., Ms. Moore, great. Second, then moved by, uh, Council Lady Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, all in favor? Discussion, all in favor?
I was right, I said.
Yes, all I thought I said, I still thought I said Mr. Locke. Miss Moore, and, 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 uh, Mr. Locke, second, thank you, I thought. You, you got his thing, but you don't hear what?
I don't know nothing.
Just the homeless shelter, with, uh, you don't have to think, you're gonna do homeless shelter over there. Okay. We have two, a motion and a second. Mr. Prentice can't vote because he's on the board of the, he's not getting any money, but he's on the board of Southside School that was purchased by Mr., Mr. Henderson. And, uh, but he, he just refused himself and I need a third vote. Mr. Shaw, may we please have you vote for people to, to, uh, help the homeless.
I think I've got all my questions answered, but, uh, but anyway, my, my concern, though, relevant.
If that works.
Is this dedicated for this?
This is, yeah, dedicated for the operation of the shelters, just like we dedicate to the dog pound. We give them what, 15,000 a year for dogs and cats. We ask them for $3,000, we ask them to approve, from the beginning, that God wants us to take care of.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So, uh, so, uh, let's move. All in favor? Let's roll call it, Ms. Goldman.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Gray, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Hey.
Mr. Prentice, you're standing.
Right.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Is it three votes? Three and one, that passes. Thank you so much. Um, uh, Ron, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sir.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, yeah.
Does, does number 15 apply to the civil service employee who is a father?
I don't think it does, doesn't this, oh.
We can, if you somebody, uh, pay on board and then the next civil service, we can make it the presidential election.
We just, most curious.
Yeah, I'm saying, this, this, uh, she got the answer.
Yeah.
You got that, too?
Yes, I mean, that, it's been a buzz between, not far.
I'm glad you brought it up, I'm glad you brought it up. We want to, you know, honor everybody and, uh, so we'll, we'll have an extra one, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, one last thing I wanted to let everyone know is that, and I don't want to call a special meeting for it. The team, uh, Mr. Williams, Senator Williams, and, uh, to the crowd.
Break a law, what you say?
Look, uh, no, I'm just telling you this, this is not an item, it's a, it's a, just hear it, please.
He just said you break a law.
Okay, I mean, um, do we have a motion or a term?
We already need it.
Okay, no, it is a motion or a term, you gonna make a motion?
I need nine to hour.
So, John?
I need it.
Okay, all in favor, yes. But let me just tell you this, let me just tell you this, this is an introduction, not a question. We need a burning curtain. We sentiment have been looking for a burning curtain so we could burn all this stuff. Now, I, I want to just let you know, a burning curtain will burn it all up without smoke and, and the residue will be just that little. We can, um, just want to know, I'm gonna contact you, they're in charge, totally. Our class one, target department, on finding a burning curtain, they found one, but it's gonna require you all voting to authorize us to get it, okay? Because we gotta dispose of that stuff and we don't have the capacity to do it. So, let me know the earliest we can.
Did she call you? Did she get you? Did Ashley call you?
Would you ask her, would you?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, I had to text, I had to text her earlier, she didn't call you.
Yeah, yeah. Expect a, a meeting next week, let us know, when it's best for you, and we'll discuss the burning curtain and the season, okay? It'll be short, I promise. Ms. Moore, thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing the day.
Thank you.
Is this free?
Is it free?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no.